Or there was a need to renew this special exception in this case.
I would just hate, if this does go forward, I would hate for them to have to come back every couple of years and try, because, I mean, we all know what's going on with the Army Corps right now with other projects, so I really can't believe that this is going to happen in two years, and I just would like to save the time, the paperwork, the labor, and all of the things that go into it, if that's at all possible.
If there is a consensus of the city council to consider an amendment to the zoning code to allow for an extension, for whatever criteria you might establish to get that extension, I think it would be appropriate to consider an ordinance of that nature amending the zoning code. Until that happens, however, there is no discretion, it's a two-year limit.
Okay. And just for clarification, this development, should it happen, they will not be in the city's seawall maintenance district, correct?
Correct.
And they have their own seawall assessment district that they're going to pay into?
They have the Section 24 Property Owners Association that they're all members of, and that has the ability to assess and maintain, which has been happening over the years, because there's been maintenance costs and cost of keeping the lake aerated and things of that nature over the years, so they still have that same ability.
Okay. And as far as policing in there, the city police, will the city police be responsible for, I don't know who can answer this question, will city police and fire be responsible for policing this lake area?
I don't see why not, it would be a navigable channel that they can come in, and they certainly have access. I hope they're policing and providing fire to the upper parts as well.
I mean, you know, it's a very realistic thing that we have to have, I mean, and we have, of course, we have the volunteer group, the Neighborhood Marine Watch Group as well, and I just wonder if this is going to be considered, even though it's a separate district, is it going to be considered part and parcel of PGI?
It'll be navigable waters that the public can...
If we get called for a fire, we're going.
Right.
And if we get, and if police need to get in there, they'll get in there.
Okay. This is a question that I was asked, so I just want to clarify that. All of the, with the exception of where the channel is right now, it's my understanding, everything in there currently is seawalled already?
It's my understanding as well, yes.
Okay. And one other question, which Hans probably will need to answer, is it possible, I know he showed the picture where he would go straight north, is it possible to consider going west?
It would be just as long, from that one slide that he had up there, it may, if you go that way, see that line is heading out that way, it would be even longer to head west. And again, with the, with all due respect, the council can't tell us necessarily which channel, because that's going to be the federal agencies and state agencies as we go through, so the specific channel location may not look like that at the end, that's our intention, and that's what we're intending to permit, and through going through all of the alternative analysis that Hans went through this morning, that's the kind of thing that those agencies look at, but they can say, oh, we want you to jog here and jog back, that'll be part of that permitting that we are just beginning now.
So, once again, for clarification, and I, please, I don't mean to be taking up a lot of time here, but the channel, as is currently being proposed, is the same as what we had last year, except there's no jetty wall, is that correct?
That's correct.
And channel markers will be the same, there'll be day markers?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Can you tell me a little bit more about the Section 24 Properties Owners Association? So, do just the Vivante people pay into that, or do the people along the Colony Point Drive also pay in?
The Colony Point properties on the west side of the road that abut the current lake are also members of that association, as it was originally set up.
So what about the couple of properties that are not, that are, I see on the aerial, are there a few there at the end of the road on the left that are not on the lake technically?
Yeah, above where the cut-through is going to be, those are not members of the Section 24 Properties Owners Association.
Okay, so that's already, they pay in there yearly, or what is their...
Well, there are no, there are no residential lots on the west side of Colony Point Road that are members, that are not members of the association. It's my opinion, and the courts will probably be the venue for this, but the properties that are on the east side of Colony Point Road, one of which is represented here, and is alleging property rights on the west side of the road, they have no rights on that side of the road. When their plat was done, the plat goes down the middle of Colony Point, and the west side of Colony Point is not included in their plat.
Okay, so, they pay in there yearly, did you say yes?
They have the ability, I don't know what the actual assessments are, but they're all members, and they're all subject to assessments, and the same thing as any other condominium association or activity like that, if you don't pay, you can have a lien against your property and all that, but that was all put in place in 1984.
Because obviously, it's going to be a significant difference between what they're paying now and what they potentially could pay if this project was approved.
Theoretically, it's also an incredible difference to the value of their property, having direct access to the harbor.
Couple of questions for Hans, the detail C, I think you pretty well explained it, but if you could go back to that slide, I wonder if anything was naturally occurring there, and I did hear you say that you were in there, and it does have some little channel area to it, but you will be dredging most of that to make that channel?
No, the area that you see highlighted in blue is the natural tidal creek that occurs within that mangrove system. You can't even see it from the areas because of the mangrove overgrowth. The area that we would actually be directly impacting, because I got to get through the mangroves that lie on the shoreline to the open water of the creek, is that small area that you see in green?
Okay.
That would basically connect what we would be doing as an artificial channel outside of the mangrove fringe lined with riprap to make the connection to the tidal creek.
And have you already passed that by any of the agencies, and they like that, or you're, that's just your design to submit?
It's the design to submit, it's the least amount of impact. I mean, we try to design waterfront facilities so that they have the least amount of impact to the resources and meet that balancing test of need, use, benefit to cost, and so this is what we've come up with as the option for creating that tidal flushing, which is important for the basin system, as well as an improvement to the tidal creek itself.
And as far as the road work, the box culvert, who is responsible for that, the property owners?
The applicants would be responsible with proper city permitting for all work done within the right of way.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now, and Gary had his hand up.
Just one question, actually, there's one issue, and this is kind of segueing on to a comment that Lynn was making. With such short access, this basin would be possibly more available for criminal activity as far as stealing a boat or something, because it's so quick to get out to it, so making sure that we have proper police coverage and/or security, maybe with a camera or whatever, I think would be paramount, but that's way in the future, but I just want to point that out, because I was asked to, and I kind of agree with that idea. The other question I have is, is do we have consensus to go forward with an extension, to ask staff to go forward with an extension ordinance at this point? Or do we, is this premature?
I think that needs to be a whole separate discussion, I would think.
It takes just a couple of seconds, is there a...
I mean, but would that be for every special exception, or this one in particular?
I think it makes sense that it's available for any special exception based on the requirements for permitting or other criteria we establish.
I could agree with that, it makes sense to me that we would do that for every applicant on any, because we cannot control that, and I think we owe that to them. I agree.
Because the expiration would cause them to create a whole new application?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that would be burdensome.
Well, and it's just as efficient for us, and for us, it will preserve our staff time as well.
And let me say this, the reason why there is a two-year limitation is because if there is a substantial change in either physical conditions or regulatory conditions, and the project's not constructed, and there's an opportunity to, when it comes back for renewal, to say, well, what might have been permissible two years ago is no longer acceptable to the city now, so we're going to deny the extension. At the time of renewal, there'll be an opportunity for you to consider all of those things as the criteria that will be established under the ordinance that I would present to you, as to what, to give you the discretion to approve the extension or not, which we don't have presently.
Okay, so it'd be a whole new process for anybody who has a special exception, and in these cases, going through all those regulatory agencies, that would trigger them to be able to do the extension process?
Or any, any other reasonable justification for the, why they could not complete the project within the two-year period, there's all kinds of possibilities that would come into play, and ultimately, it would be within your discretion to grant or deny the extension based on some reasonable criteria.
Okay.
I think for the sake of efficiency that we need to do that.
Yeah, that would be...
I just wanted to clear it up, so, I'm on board.
I have a question for Hans, this is, this may be redundant, it's continuing kind of what Lynn was speaking on, about with alternative analysis, why you can't go to a northwest direction? Because in terms of due diligence, I guess you want to explore all the possibilities, I just wanted to know why, because if it was northwest, it had less impact on Colony Point, but then there may be reasons, I wanted to know, I guess, what the reasons why it's, this direction was chosen?
Well, fundamentally, is if you take a look at the alignment, and you compare that, where I've got 170 feet, which is the shore parallel section of the channel versus 2,025 linear feet, just, we're, you know, almost 10 times greater in length of what we're talking about. From the regulatory agency standpoint, you know, they, I don't want to sound flippant, but their concern isn't really Colony Point's objection to boat traffic in front, although I can testify here that having done the flushing study in front of Colony Point, that that is already a boating superhighway. You've, you know, trying to operate at idle speed and use droves and current meters, I've got boats zooming all around me at planing speed, and by the way, should be noted, according to the City of Punta Gorda's ordinance from '96, I believe, this is really classified as a slow speed zone out to that contour line. So technically, if it was marked, if that line was marked, enforcement would be able to cause boaters to operate at slow speed out to that 2,000-foot limit, but beside that, the Corps of Engineers looks at what the resource impacts are, and if there's an opportunity that I can reduce the amount of dredging that I've got to do, which means that I'm impacting submerged resources in the bottom, and even though most of it is basically sand and shell and mud and some organics, similar to what's in front of the Colony Point piece, the reality is that it's a far greater total area of impact and a far greater volume that I would have to excavate, which of course adds cost, and that's part of also my responsibility to the applicant, is how do I minimize the cost of doing this thing? So it's really a balancing test between resource impacts, cost of construction, cost to benefit, and the reality of how the waterway is used in that location.
Hans, if you could just clarify, you've said twice 170, isn't it 700 feet?
Is it, I thought it was 170, is it, I have to zoom in on it.
I just so the record is clear.
Is it seven?
Yeah.
I knew there was a seven in there.
It's 700 feet, parallel.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, there it says, right in the text, because I did put this together, that's true. The, instead of the 700 foot, to clarify, to connect to the existing dredged and marked channel coming out of Tarpon Canal, it is approximately 2,025 feet, so it's three times greater. So visually, you can see it's a significantly greater amount of impact, sorry about the number confusion.
That's okay, it's been clarified. Any other questions before we move on?
No, you asked the actual question that I was going to ask about the Property Owners Association, the people on the west side of Colony Point. I know, just a comment, and that I have a similar number of properties who have docks that do, whose boats can go by my home, and if I see a half a dozen boats on a day, I mean, it's a lot. So it's, you know, what has been said is that the prospect of people really not being out there on their boats every day is pretty accurate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will hear...
The, before the applicants make their presentation, not the applicants, interveners, if they have any cross-examination questions for the expert witnesses, including the city staff, this would be the time that they could do that, and then they could enter subsequently their presentation.
Sure. Derek Rooney from Gray Robinson Law Firm, on behalf of Colony Point, I just had two procedural questions about the prior two testimonies.
Derek, would you formally identify the entity that you are representing?
Colony Point Incorporated, which is the homeowners association for Colony Point Condominiums.
Thank you.
Okay. I wasn't sure at what Mr. Wilson was being made a expert in, was it marine engineering? That was never put onto the record, and also whether Mr. DeLeese was accepted by the city council as an expert in planning or boat usage, there was no decision on those two points.
Mr. Burnson, would you go ahead and make your tender again, and the record will be clear as to what the city council is accepting?
I would tender Mr. DeLeese as an expert in planning, and Mr. Wilson as an expert in marine engineering and design.
I don't have any objections, I just want to make sure it was clear on the record.
Any objections here?
No.
No.
And then, I also want to make sure, because it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me whether Mr. Wilson's PowerPoint presentation will actually be accepted as part of the record.
If it's tendered...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we would tender that as part of the record.
It will be accepted.
Any other questions from the other intervener? Okay.
All right, so this would be the time for any intervener to present their presentation.
I'm back. Again, Derek Rooney, Gray Robinson Law Firm, on behalf of Colony Point Incorporated. We oppose the proposal, finding that it is inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations, it does not adequately consider the impacts on adjacent riparian rights, and the application fails to show adequate ownership. The latter two of these issues, if the city's not aware, are presently the subject of a suit against the applicants and the city to resolve those issues. I'm going to have two witnesses today, Max Forgie, who I proffer as an expert witness in planning, and Sherri Robinson, the president of Colony Point. I do also understand and agree with the city attorney's opinion regarding the ownership issue, it's something to be dealt with by the courts, however, the testimony today compels me to address some of this issue of the declarations, it's throughout the staff report, throughout the discussion on the Property Owners Association, the declarations, the declarations, the declarations, my answer is, so what? They don't override the city's comprehensive plan or land development regulations, and as they were recorded in 1984, Markorable Record Title Act means that they expired in 2014. Find no evidence in the record that they were extended or revitalized under the statute. So, from our perspective, that, those declarations provide that the ownership is shared between those original owners, there's not the applicants here today, and that those declarations cannot be binding on those property owners, and yet, the conditions in the staff report, everything else going forward, can constantly refer to the importance of those declarations with no evidence about their legality. There's only a letter added into the record since last year's hearings, discussing by an attorney giving an opinion on the declarations, and that opinion is just to the contents, not to their continued validity. So I just want to get that on the record, and I will now ask Max to come up and give his presentation. He has a handwritten, or a copy of his testimony, I'll provide a copy to Mr. Burnson, as well as his resume as well, thank you.
As he's making his way to the podium, I do want to share with the city council that at 4:40 yesterday afternoon, the Colony Point, Inc., did in fact file a complaint for declaratory judgment with the Circuit Court of Charlotte County. I was copied with that approximately the same late date, late time in the afternoon. It is, I don't think it's been served yet on the city. It raises a couple of legal issues, which are allegations until determined by the Circuit Court to be accurate. I would want you to just be aware of that, but it would have no effect on your moving forward today, if it turns out that the applicant doesn't have the legal authority to make this application and be binding upon those that would otherwise be affected, then the court will determine that, and the special exception will not override the court's determination. But my opinion is you may move forward today, notwithstanding the filing of the complaint for declaratory judgment. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Good morning, mayor and council members, my name is Max Forgie.
I have been sworn, my office is at 4637 Vincennes Boulevard in Cape Coral, and I am handing to the clerk copies of my written expert report, I think I have enough for all of you, and one to opposing counsel. In my preparation for this report and for my testimony today, I visited the site twice on August 26th and August 28th, 2016. I have conferred with neighboring property owners, with councilors Rooney and Haymans, and have reviewed the application, the staff report, the Punta Gorda Comprehensive Plan, and your land development code. Briefly regarding my qualifications, I have a Master of Public Affairs degree with a concentration in urban and regional planning from the Indiana University School of Public and Environmental Affairs. This May, I will, in one way or another, celebrate my 25th anniversary as a member in good standing of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I maintain my professional certification through annual study, writing, and speaking. I am presenting you with one copy of my resume and a copy of the AICP Code of Ethics. I have presented as a planning director or community development director hundreds of cases to bodies such as yours, and I have been an expert witness in about 25 jurisdictions which are listed in my resume. Subject property is a little more than one acre of mangrove lands, it is illustrated on the future land use map as preservation. My testimony this morning is going to be mostly about the comprehensive plan and your land development code. Objective 2.4 of the Punta Gorda Comprehensive Plan defines tidal swamp. Title swamp is mangrove forest, mangrove swamp, mangrove islands, dense low forests occurring along shorelines of low wave energy in southern Florida. Dominant plants are red, black, and white mangroves and buttonwood, providing vital protection to shorelines during tropical storm events. The subject property is without doubt a tidal swamp due to the pattern of vegetation as I have observed it. Objective 2B53, ensure protection and explore restoration opportunities of mangrove stands to increase shoreline protection. This objective places a value upon mangrove protection, which is the binary opposite of the action proposed in the application, i.e. the complete destruction of mangrove wetlands and their commensal species and habitat. I personally observe that there are horseshoe crabs and shellfish in abundance at this Your land development code, Section 816, it shall be unlawful for any person to cut down, destroy, remove, or relocate any genus of mangrove in the city without first receiving approval from the State Department of Environmental Protection, if required, in accordance with Chapter 1727 FAC. The Data and Analysis section of your comprehensive plan, though it is not adopted by ordinance, is the foundation for the goals, objectives, and policies which are, and I'm going to skip this one and this one, and go to Article 2. Article 2 includes provisions for environmental protection and promotes public welfare through the regulation of the design, construction, use, and maintenance of any development or other activity which disturbs land or removes the vegetative cover or results in the movement of soils on construction sites within the city. And also in the Data and Analysis section, Conservation Element, Page 2A17, the city's challenges include not only water quality issues, but management of mangrove areas, protection of seagrass area, restoration of oyster reefs, establishment and protection of new water supply sources for growing populations and businesses, management of waste generated by septic tank and storm sewer outfalls, protection of wetland areas for water retention, groundwater recharge, and wildlife habitat, and improving the efficiency of freshwater usage. Conservation Element, Goal 2A1, the city's conservation programs are directed toward the long-term conservation and protection of its natural resources. That's not what's taking place here, this is the destruction of natural resource. Objective 2A12, Punta Gorda will cooperate in the strategic protection of natural resources in and around the city, including coastal and estuarine resources, with such protection strategy, including the relationships of resources to larger environmental systems, including fisheries, wildlife habitat, native vegetative communities and soils, and including environmentally sensitive land and development practices. Granting this application would in no way advance this important objective. It would provide no opportunity for cooperation with any agency. It would protect no natural resources and would moreover destroy a patch of mangrove forest and its commensal habitat. It would radically change a freshwater basin to a brackish inlet, and would impact fisheries, wildlife habitat, native vegetative communities, and soils in ways that have not been fully assessed or modeled by the applicant or city staff. Conservation Element Policy 2A121, Punta Gorda will protect existing publicly owned, environmentally sensitive land in the city through the preservation classification described in Policy 1148 of the Future Land Use Element, and the measurement is acreage of environmentally sensitive lands preserved. The future land use map, which is a component of the comprehensive plan adopted by ordinance, illustrates this property as preservation. Since the measurement of the implementation of the policy is the acreage of environmentally sensitive land preserved, it is noteworthy that mangrove land, which is undeniably environmentally sensitive and irreplaceable, will be destroyed, resulting in a net loss. Infrastructure Element, the City of Punta Gorda will provide a safe, efficient, and cost-effective stormwater management system which will improve and preserve the manmade and natural drainage systems, minimize the effect of non-point sources on Charlotte Harbor Estuary, and reduce... reduce the flooding problems in the community. This isn't the end of the presentation yet, but it's the end of my slides. Now, the staff report recites several policies of the Pontagorda Comprehensive Plan, which call for Pontagorda to be a boating-oriented community, and basically saying that boating is a good thing, of course. But these policies, which I have just cited, are not referred to in the staff report. The staff report is incomplete for that reason. And I ask you to consider the ones that I have just presented as well. Now, I want to go to the matter of land development code and the canal cut-through, which is what's being requested here, as a special exception. The Pontagorda Land Development Code is very thorough. It's very well-written. It has 269 definitions in Section 19.3, and canal cut-through isn't one of them. It is conspicuous by its absence. And it makes me wonder if canal cut-through was ever considered appropriate as a land use to begin with. The Section 16.9 of your code refers to the inherent limitations of the special exception process. It says, I quote, "The special exception process provides the city council with the opportunity to exercise discretionary power in considering the establishment of certain uses that, due to their nature, design, or location, may have the potential for adverse impacts on adjacent land uses and/or the health, safety, and welfare of the community. This ordinance designates such uses special exceptions. When considering such uses, the city council will have the authority to impose conditions that are designed to remove or mitigate potentially adverse impacts upon the community or other properties in the vicinity of the proposed use. Special exception uses shall only be allowed..." "only be allowed..." "...if reviewed and approved in accordance with the procedures of this section." All the... End the quote. "Although this section contemplates the approval of applications for special exception via the imposition of conditions, it is noteworthy that outright denial is the option available to land use decision-makers," which is you, "when no condition can mitigate the potential harm, in this case, the mangroves and their habitat." I also wish to call to your attention that your ordinance provides an overbroad delegation of authority to the zoning official. Within the GM multifamily zoning district, there are 12 designated special exception uses, and they range from the relatively innocuous home occupations and childcare to the relatively intense, such as high schools and nursing homes. There is nothing that comes even close to canal cut-through and to the use which... the larger use which is before you. And there is a 13th option, which says, "and any such other uses as deemed appropriate in the district by the zoning official." This is an overbroad delegation because it does not impose criteria for the determination of appropriateness on the zoning official's part. It does not require the zoning official to compare the proposed use with the other 12 uses and to determine whether it is comparable with the designated uses. It does not require a written statement from the zoning official explaining justifications for approval and considerations which the zoning official made in reaching a conclusion. It provides no opportunity for challenge or appeal except through this special exception hearing process which we're going through today. The staff report provides no analysis of potential environmental inputs, and the Florida Supreme Court established a two-step standard for review of a rezoning application, and special exceptions fall under that, by local government boards in Brevard County v. Snyder in 1993. The first step, which is the council's business today, is that a landowner seeking to rezone property has the burden of proving that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with all procedural requirements of the zoning ordinance, close quote. Neither the application nor the staff report has proven consistency with the comprehensive plan or with the LDC, the zoning ordinance, because consistency with the comprehensive plan is one of the criteria for LDC consistency. In conclusion, based upon the above analysis of the application, staff report, and other relevant information which I provided you, I conclude that the applicant has failed to meet the test to provide competent substantial evidence, as called for in the Snyder decision, and that the rezoning as proposed would be inconsistent with the Pontagorda Comprehensive Plan and should be denied outright. Thank you.
Thank you. You have the ball. A little south of 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'd ask at this time that Max's testimony be considered expert in planning, and that the summary of his testimony be added to the record. And briefly, I'd ask that Sherri Johnson, the president of the Colony Point Homeward Association, come up and speak as to their concerns.
While she's making her way up here, is there any objection?
Any objection to him being an expert witness, Max?
I have no objection to that.
No, okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sherri Robinson. I am president of the Colony Point Condo Association, and I have been sworn. Briefly, just want to reiterate for the record that as the represent... representative of our 63 owners at Colony Point condos, I'm here to just let you know that we have a couple of concerns about the proposed cut-through from the Vivanti Lake into the harbor. First of all, our concern... Our first concern is that the proposed channel and project would adversely affect the association's riparian property rights, including any future plans Colony Point may have to construct our own docks on the western or northern shores. The second concern we have is that the proposal will have negative impacts on Colony Point and affects the owners' quiet enjoyment of their property. I will say that I'm on the northern shore, and I'm about five feet from the seawall on the windows of our lanai, and personally, my concern is that my dolphin buddies that come past my window every morning around 9:00 while I'm having my coffee will be annoyed. So, and so I'm concerned about that. So, we just want to have it on the record that those are the two primary concerns of the Colony Point 63 owners, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And she reminded me of a very important thing I should have done, which is to indicate that I had been sworn.
Okay, thank you.
I'll wrap up real quick. We find that the staff report and the applicants have been cherry-picking the most supportive comprehensive plan elements for the consideration of this application, and that based on Mr. Forghey's analysis that he addressed, they did not meet requirements of the plan for your special exception criteria, which is consistency with your comp plan, and as a result, that they have failed to meet their burden, and that in addition, due to the issues of ownership and plan inconsistency, that they also have not supported their request with competent substantial evidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the applicant, at this point, have any cross-examination questions for the witnesses?
We're getting a head shake. No.
Okay.
So now, we will hear from the second intervinor.
Good morning. Michael Haymans. I'm an attorney representing the Pollacks, Robert and Teresa Pollack. I have been sworn. The... I've been practicing law since 1983 here in Charlotte County, and practiced title... not only title insurance but title opinion. We used to represent First Federal Savings and Loan Association for years, and they wouldn't accept any title opinion from anyone but the far law firm, and they wouldn't accept title insurance because they believed that the far law firm, which was the firm that developed, was on the board of directors and was the attorney for Pontagorda Isles, knew the most about the title issues that the lender had, and we were schooled in that. I've examined abstracts. I've dealt with the law concerning title to lands. I've developed the declarations of restrictions for many communities. I have fought to enforce the deed restrictions and have fought against deed restrictions throughout my career. I can tell you that the city has not adequately reviewed and understood the circumstance of ownership as concerns this application. You know, the... There's a... There's a signature page on your special exception application, and it says, "I, the undersigned, being first duly sworn, testify and say that I am the owner, the attorney, attorney in fact, agent, lessee, or representative of the owners of all of the property described and which is the subject matter of the proposed hearing." And I'm authorized to sign the application by the owner or owners, and that by submitting this application, the owners of the property grant consent to the zoning official to enter upon the subject property. So, there's some significance to submitting an application, and the city has taken the position, "Well, if they say they're the owners, they're the owners." But their very application that they submitted, and the information that was provided, and the continuing reference to the Pontagorda Isles Section 24 Declaration of Restrictions, which was recorded in 1984 and which, at this time, is no longer as valid, the only thing that survives from that declaration of restrictions is where there was a conveyance through the recording of that declaration of ownership, an undivided ownership for the land under the lakes, under these stormwater lakes. And you see that in... There was a reference to it, so I know that the staff has read it. There's a reference to the paragraph that has to do with the ownership, and it refers back to the... attachments that were part of the declaration of restrictions, and those declarations of restrictions say that there's undivided ownership, and it lists in Exhibit B to that declaration of restrictions, all of the properties that are owners, and says that that ownership goes from those people that owned it at that time to their successors and assigns, without it ever being referenced in the deeds, because they're pertinent to the ownership of the property. And that includes the folks that are along Colony Point, on that west side of Colony Point Drive, as well as the folks that have the lots that have become these condominiums. And so, in Paragraph 22, "Lakefront Property," it says, "It is understood and agreed that the owner of each of the four reference lots and condominium units which may be subsequently built thereon immediately adjacent to the lake, as described and attached in Exhibit A, which lots are described in the attachment B, shall have an undivided interest in all of the lake." It goes on to say, "Which interests shall be equivalent to the owner's obligation to pay maintenance thereon as set forth herein." And then it goes on to say other things. It says, "Nothing shall prohibit the association of the majority of the adjacent unit owners from seeking an outlet from the lake to the harbor." But that doesn't say that you have... that you don't have to get the signature of every owner. It just says that those people can do that. Well, you've got a reconstituted Pontagorda Isles, PGI, Section 24 Property Owners Association. It has died of its own lack of attention. 2007, it got reinstated, and then it didn't exist again, and then it got reconstituted. But you know, when you reconstitute something where there's no effective declaration of restrictions, you no longer have a compelled member. When there was a declaration of restrictions that was in effect, that declaration said every property owner will also be a member of the association. So, you've got compunction. You've got the requirement that they participate in the association. There is no such continuing obligation. And so, when they say, "We've had a vote and put this thing back together, and we've got a Property Owners Association," that's not a compelled Property Owners Association. If I don't want to be in it, I don't have to be in it, even if I'm in the property that was otherwise declared. So, you already heard a statement that the Pontagorda Isles Section 24 Declaration of Restrictions has died because it's terminated. It's too old, and it wasn't renewed. And so, through the action of law, without doing anything else, those declarations no longer exist. The only thing that survives from those declaration of restrictions is the ownership that happened at the time that the declaration was recorded, because you can't take that ownership back away. That doesn't die with the declarations. That happened. That's manifest. It's there. Those people own that. But all those other conditions and restrictions and other qualifiers, "Nothing will prohibit the association majority from seeking an outlet," that died. That's not effective anymore. And yes, we have asked Circuit Court to declare our rights and the rights of the city to have accepted this application. We didn't ask for an injunction. You can move forward. Yes, you can. Should you? No, you shouldn't. And you should find that the application is inadequate because it doesn't have each of the owners. There's... There are... There are the applicants... There's only two of them that are in the list of property owners. There's only two of them. All the rest of the 40 property owners are not there. So, there's two, and then there's 38 that aren't a part of this application. And so, you're asking that you've been asked on behalf of some group of them, some two of them, to do something when you need all 40 of those signatures. So, what are you doing? You believe in upholding your rules, your requirements? Well, I mean, why would you let this go forward and say, "Oh, you've got to go figure this out in Circuit Court?" Well, that's what we were told at the Planning Commission, and so, we were invited. We have no other choice. If your attorney's going to tell you, "We take it at face value," and you accept that advice, then, I mean, we were compelled to do this. We have no other recourse. And so, I'm sorry that the city is now being sued in a declaratory action by my clients, but we were invited into it, and it's because staff and the city has said, "We don't really care about our rules, or we're going to take it at face value," even though the very application that was submitted and the very evidence that was presented about why they could come in and why they didn't need, when it was just the association that needed, that could come to it. You've... I can't believe that you're doing this, frankly, and you shouldn't do it. So, that's the ownership issue, and you should really take that to heart. Really take that to heart, because there's owners that aren't here, and you're about to... I think the train's out of the... On the tracks and running full speed. I think that... I think that you're going to approve this, and you shouldn't, because it's not properly before you. That's the first thing. Second thing is that there are riparian rights that the... Are impacted and haven't... And that has to do with, what is the effect of the approval on the neighbors? Well, the neighbors that you have, number one, the applicant says, "Neighbors aren't harmed. Neighbors are going to get benefited. It's going to be... They're going to get docks. They're going to be... Have increased value for their property." Yeah, that's the ones within there. Yeah, that's the ones within there. They're going to get a dock on the lake, they get access out. Your other neighbors, that's who you're supposed to be looking out for when you say, "What's the effect upon the neighbors?" They didn't even, ah, that's just a few boats going by. Nah, they can't really, you've already got an ordinance that says they can't have a dock that goes out far enough. Well, let me say, you know, after I heard that, Hans Wilson says, "There's, you can't build a dock more than 80 feet out there, and we're 100 feet out there." But he also submitted evidence of the bathymetry that it's one to two feet until you get way out there. Well, let me tell you, there's a requirement for the agencies to get to minus four feet with a dock. They don't care about what the city of Punta Gorda's rules are, and so, and maybe you don't either. And as a matter of fact, when somebody said, "Well, there's a two-year limitation." Well, let's change the ordinance. Well, why not change the ordinance that says that we can go more than 80 feet? So, there's a riparian litoral right that goes to Colony Point without argument. There's an argument for the Pollocks. You get there for the Pollocks in two steps. Number one, you also already have in front of you that, where the Pollocks, which is the residential structure immediately next to Colony Point condominium, when that was developed by Punta Gorda Isles, that was dredged. That was part of the navigable waters of the state of Florida and the United States when that dredge changed that and put that fill up there. Well, you know what? Formally sovereign and formerly navigable waters, when they get filled, still retain riparian rights. That's a little twist that goes in there. That's a twist that there are still riparian rights. And then add on to, although we're the other side of the road, the city of Punta Gorda has taken the position that, that rather than what a body of law considers, that when you vacate a road, that it goes, that it goes by after acquired title, that you operate on the, on the opinion of your attorney that says, "No, you, you own under the road," that you actually have an ownership that's existent right now that then has an easement over it. And so, we've got something that has riparian rights, that has a road that's in front of us, and then the water, and I assert to you that we have riparian rights, that the Pollocks have riparian rights, litoral, because that's the proper term, litoral really, in tidal waters. We use riparian as a catch-all phrase, but it's really litoral. I've written, published about riparian and litoral rights. I'm not, this isn't just new, something I'm trying to figure out. I mean, I know David does this too. He's well-versed in it. He's recognized in it. We've worked in very similar circumstances over the years, and he knows that what I'm saying to you is true, that there's an argument, that it comes down to, we've got some riparian rights. But whether the Pollocks themselves have the riparian rights or not, there's no doubt that Colony Point has them, and they're, the agencies would require, in order to do resource protection, that they have, if they have a dock that goes out, that they have to get to minus four feet, so that they don't cause resource damage, that they don't cause prop churn, so they don't have a requirement to do a dredge. Mr. Wilson says, "Oh, well, they can just dredge in there," you know? That's, that's not what's preferred in an aquatic preserve. We're talking about an aquatic preserve, where the rules say, "You preserve this stuff." So, even getting a dock out there would be a difficulty, but when you put a channel in front of them and, and cut them off from their access to the channel, you know, this is what riparian and litoral rights were really about. It's, it has to do with, historically, things were built on the water because that was the transportation network. And so, they're developed in the common law, this notion that if you were on a navigable body, that you had the right to, to access, and it included the right for many years and many jurisdictions, to warf out in order to, in order to, to have that access. And what this project does is it takes away the ability to even ask to try to have proper access on navigable waters for Colony Point, and I assert for my client also. And why? You heard Mr. Wilson say it. He has an obligation to keep the costs down for his client, not only to protect the resources, but to protect their pocketbook. And so, what they're doing in this, and they're asking you to help them to do, is to externalize their costs onto Colony Point and onto my client. And that's what they, and that's what they've done in this entire thing. They won't even look at another access because they've got other, they have other riparian litoral property there, lots of shoreline. They don't have to impact us. They're choosing it because of costs, and they're externalizing the cost by impacting our riparian rights and our ability to access the property from navigable waters, and they're also imposing the detriment of additional boat traffic and the, the impact upon the neighbors by having that additional. And so, the analysis has always been, oh, foot traffic and motor vehicle traffic, but they leave out this idea that the boats. And then they want it two ways, and I've heard all of us do it a little bit this way. "Oh, I wish I could use my boat more, you know? We don't really use our boats that much." I get it. But do you start with the notion that you're, that this is not going to, that all of these people, a lot of them retired, a lot of them here for the boating community, aren't going to be using their boats? I don't think that you should start with that assumption. Where's the backup that says that? I mean, we've got anecdotal. We know that, yeah, it sort of feels that way, but there's no evidence that's been presented that those people aren't going to be using their boats and that it's not going to be an impact. And then, and so, they say it one way. They say, "Oh, hardly anybody uses their boats, no real impact." But when the other side of the argument, "But this is a great project because we're going to take all that pressure off the boat ramps." The, and, and so, and so, it's, it's one or the other. It's either you're really going to have lots of use, so is the, or, or it really has no impact upon the boat ramps because people don't really use their boats. I mean, I don't get it, how they so boldly proclaim both arguments right in the same time, coming out of, you know? You can't have it both ways. So, they failed to, staff has failed to, and the applicant has failed to adequately assess the impact upon the neighbors that aren't part of the, the project, and they let in an application that doesn't have owners, all of the owners signing on. If all of those owners get a boat dock, why wouldn't they go get them to sign on to this instead of dancing around it? I mean, really, that's the, that's the issue, is, is there's people, the evidence that they presented says, "We, we have, it's a Section 24 Property Owners Association, and it's all these members," but that's not true because there's no compunction, and they don't have, and they don't have all of the owners that's right in the declaration that they're trying to rely upon. Thank you for listening to me. Please take this seriously and don't, there's no reason for us to be in court fighting about this on the, on the ownership interest, for sure. It's clear. It doesn't take, it doesn't take a Circuit Court judge to tell you that. It's in the documents that they submitted.